I'd like to call this meeting of the Northwest Local School District Board of Education to order. Mr. Bertram, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Detzal?
Here.
Mrs. Detzal?
Here.
Mr. Edith?
Here.
Mr. Harlow?
Here.
Mr. Unger?
Here. Our next item is, would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Our next item is the approval of minutes from the last meeting. Dr. Jackson?
The Superintendent and Treasurer recommend the Board of Education approve the minutes as listed.
Motion's been moved and seconded.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Bertram, please call for the vote. The motion carries five to zero. Our next item is legislative update. Mr. Harlow?
Yes, the Ohio General Assembly is considering the conference report on House Bill 487, the mid-bianian review. There's a couple pertinent parts of education in there. The Senate added a provision that would prohibit Boards of Education from appealing property tax valuations, and that is being contested by the Ohio School Board Association. They're obviously advocating for that to be removed in conference, and college credit plus continues to be a sticking point funding for that. There's a minimum funding floor, and that may get taken out as well and just allow for the agreements to be made by mutual consent. So, that's my legislative update.
Mr. Harlow, does that call for any other group besides school districts to not be able to appeal property tax valuations such as cities, villages, townships?
I'm not certain about that. It's all government agencies.
Interesting update. Thank you, Mr. Harlow. Butler Tech update, Mr. Detzal?
I just have one thing, Dan. I just wanted to make sure that for the groundbreaking for the bioscience, it was on June 14th. I gave you guys a handout last week, just to make sure if you're going to be there to email the lady that's in charge of that so she can get your names down.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Detzal. Our next item is report from employee organizations. Is there anyone from a certificated or licensed employee organization that would like to speak? Seeing none. A report from classified employee organizations, is there anyone that would like to speak? Report from school-related organizations, is there a representative from a school-related organization who would like to speak? Our next item is community comments. I've received three cards from folks who would like to speak, and I'll call on Mr. Rich McVeigh, and he would like to discuss report cards.
Thank you. I was here in November, and I spoke to the last board about our report card results, and just to kind of look back over those again. We weren't doing well. The progress report, value-added scores for the districts, we received an F grade. The value-added scores for the district were on decline, and close to 90% of the school districts in the state were doing a better job. In southwest Ohio, about 70% of the school districts are doing a better job than we were. And I know that seems like it's old news, but accountability has come back to the board and talking about results. And we're going to hear tonight, I think, some feedback from a group that the superintendent's put together to look at schools who are doing better than we are in some areas, and we're bringing back some ideas for us to put in place. So until those results are approved, and I hope they are, we get our next report card preliminary results, the Superintendent tells me in June, and we'll know something about what we're looking like in June. But I will be here talking with you about results, academic results, as long as they're coming in front of us and until they improve, because I think that's the level of accountability that needs to be here present in the room. And I know it doesn't always feel good to have people ask me about, you know, what you're doing and why isn't it getting better faster, but I think that's something that accountability entails. I don't know how many of you got, get Cincinnati Magazine. I got mine a couple weeks ago. There's a thing called rating the burbs in here, and they rate the top 50 communities in the tri-state area. And for the last four or five years, Coleraine Township doesn't make it into the top 50. Okay? They rate us for, they rate people on housing, education, safety, taxes, and all that kind of stuff. And we're the biggest township and the second-largest township in the state, and we can't make it into the top 50, okay? And part of the reason is because we don't score very well from an educational standpoint. They look at things like how much you're spending per student, you know, and how many class sizes, your results, all these kind of things, similar to what they do at the state level. So, I mean, there are a lot of people who are looking at us and are saying that we're not in the top 50. And if you look at our hard number scores, we're not in the top 50 as well. So I think that that deserves a lot of our attention. And I've watched some of these board meetings over the last several weeks, and there's a lot of stuff going on here, and not much of it's focused on improving academic results. And the other thing I see is that there's behavior going on here with jeering and name-calling, kind of bullying stuff that we wouldn't allow to happen in school. We put a stop on it, but for some reason, it goes on in this boardroom. And I think we, there's not, I know that leadership starts at the top. How leadership behaves flows down through the system. Those people who are crying for, let's return to the past, I will say to you, the past is what produced the results we have today, where 90% of the districts are doing better than we are. The past is what produced an environment that got 23 kids expelled, okay? That's an environmental issue. If we had a different environment, that wouldn't happen. Now, I think it was right to take action. I'm not saying, I'm not second-guessing that decision at all. But we have a school system where that kind of behavior is not even thought about being tolerated in someone's head. That comes down from the top. That's a leadership issue, with leaders asking the right questions, asking people to do the right thing. If you look at the data, there are districts that are doing a lot better with us than we are, and they spend less money, they have a higher percentage of disappearing students, okay? So there's things that we can learn, okay? Now, if in fact, and I'm going to get in the fast lane here, if this is an African-American problem and nobody will talk about it, then I think Dexter has said, we need to have people who can work with African-American students, who gain their respect, can hold them accountable, and can motivate them, because our district is now 20%, 25% African-American. The leadership team needs to work on putting in place the kind of leaders that can deal with these kids, gain their respect, get them motivated, move them on. There are districts where that's happening, okay? So I understand you're concerned about lawyers, and you're concerned about who's doing the architectural work, you know? Get over that stuff. It's the students that matter. It's the students that matter, and you're not focusing on academic results. It's looking at other stuff. And I just urge you to think that through. It's not the politics of the past, it's not the organization of the past that's going to improve us, because that organization got us where we are today, okay? There's some good things going on, but by all the hard measures, we don't stand up to the rest of the world. Now, I want to, I'll stop now, and I want to come back later, because I know that the Superintendent has had a group of people who've been looking at what we can learn from other districts who have similar demographics, and I'll hold my comments on that until we're finished. Thank you.
Mr. McVeigh, I would like to, with your comment about the board meetings and what goes on here, I think it's critical that everyone is allowed to speak, and I realize there's some jeering, and I do ask to have those who want to speak to come to the podium, and I've never shut anybody down from speaking. So the yellow cards are for now, and then at the end of the meeting, we can discuss what's been discussed at the meeting. I've just never wanted to shut anybody down, because I think that I'd be going down a whole different road if I did that. So I've always let everyone speak at the conclusion of the meeting when we have audience participation. Our next speaker is Brenda Fawcett, and she would like to talk about the Butler Tech Business Professionals Class. And I appreciate you coming out this evening. I received an email from you earlier today. Could you make sure that red light is on on the microphone?
It is.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I'm here to talk about a particular program that's offered at Northwest High School. The program itself is a Butler Tech program. It's Business Professionals Financial Services Program. It is a program where the children have to apply to be accepted into the program. They have to agree to commit to a two-year program, and I believe it's also a two-bell out of the seven-bell class per day. The kids that were accepted into the program for this particular fall are agreeing to be in their junior and senior years, and I'm having an issue with this particular class because it's worth college credit, but for some reason, the curriculum doesn't allow this class to be as weighted GPA at this time. The weighted GPA is quite important, is to be recognized in the honor program, and with it being a class that's worth college credit, I think it would be pretty easy to obtain that. What I have come to find out is there is a set of rules, I guess you would say, in place for having this done. Our principal over at Northwest High, it's her first year as principal, she gathered all the required information, working with the teacher, Mr. Clark, and submitted the application for approval for the honors program in October, which apparently is one month behind when you're supposed to submit that. She was unaware of the deadline, had no idea. She submitted the packet, and apparently it was returned to her and told her, wait till next year, try it again. My issue with this is out of these 28, 29 kids that are in this class, I would say about five of them are in your top 15 students in currently the sophomore class. If this class is not given the distinction of being an honors program and given the weighted GPA, those five children, their class rank will drop, because it's not a weighted GPA class, and it doesn't really go in line with all the other weighted GPA honor classes that those kids are taking, so their GPAs will drop. And in turn, when they go to graduate high school, they're not going to be able to graduate cum laude if they continue to keep their grades up. And currently, these children, a lot of them, are on that track. And just because, and no fault of these children, and, you know, not knowing the deadline, there's nothing that they could help, and with the new principal not knowing that there was such a deadline, I really think that we need to take the time to relook at this class and see if we can get it accredited for this fall. Waiting till the following year to submit that, that's great for this year's freshmen, next year's sophomores, but it does nothing for the class that's currently going to be sophomores this year, juniors next year. It does nothing for them. So that class will miss out on the distinction of graduating cum laude for a program that's worth college credit, just because paperwork wasn't sent in on time because a new principal didn't know that there was a specific deadline. So I'm asking that that gets relooked at again and made an honors program for the sophomore.
Thank you for making us aware of this. Do you know how long this class has been offered? How many years?
I do not know. I honestly cannot tell you. I just know that apparently recently, the class has become eligible for, I've been told, six college credits from UC, because the individual that teaches the class is approved by UC to teach the class, and therefore it's worth college credits to these children. Which I know for myself, that was a big selling point for my son. He wants a degree in business, and this was totally the right way for him to go at this point. And considering, you know, he's honestly, my own child is ranked ninth in his sophomore class, this is going to affect him horribly. This is going to affect him, not only with his class rank, but it's also going to reflect on, you know, we all, we all need scholarships for these children. And when you don't graduate at the top of your class because curriculum wasn't changed correctly, to reflect the difficulty of this particular course, it also affects scholarship opportunities as well, when he can't say that he's in, you know, the top 10 of his class, the top 10% of his class, you know, he's not graduating cum laude because of this one thing is holding him back.
So it was a mistake by a period of just a few days or an entire month?
I believe it was about a month. I don't know the exact deadlines, but I was told there was an imposed deadline of September. And Susan Smith was unaware of that particular date. It is her first year as principal at Northwest High School. She had no idea that there was an imposed date that was a requirement. She worked with the teacher, gathered all the paperwork, and sent it in a big old packet and said she had it returned, because she had missed the deadline by a month.
Andrew, can we relook at this?
Yeah, I'd like to interject a few comments if I could. The course has been around since Butler Tech has been here, I think, four or five years or maybe longer, has never had an honor weight. So this is not something new, as if next year's juniors are going to be the first group not to have that class as an honor weight. We do have a process here for teachers and administrators requesting a class become an honor weight. It was beyond the deadline, so it was returned, saying it was too late, because we have to get it, there's a, there's a process to go through, and then we have to get it ready for class sign-ups and the courses study, et cetera, that we, the course description books. So I just became aware of it today, so I'm looking into it. We could possibly look at it again, but just looking at it again doesn't necessarily mean it's going to become an honors course. There's still a process if we choose to not enforce the deadline on it and look at it. That doesn't mean it will by default become an honors class. We have several dual-credit classes next year that are not going to be honors classes. We have some foreign languages. We also have a college algebra, so just making it a dual-credit college class does not necessarily mean it's an honors class. But, you know, I'm going to look at the information and try to get that sorted out and find out exactly what happened and, you know, how the deadline was missed, et cetera, and who was aware of it. But students can also declare courses, so there is a situation where there's, a student wants to take a class that's not an honor class, they can declare that course, so it doesn't count against their weighted GPA. So there's some other things we have in place as well for that. But as I emailed back, I will look into it this weekend and try to figure out what happened.
We did just see that information today, so this is all very current.
And just so that you would know this too, I've been told that this class cannot be declared at all, so it is going to affect its GPA.
And Dr. Jackson will look into that and get back to us. Did you?
I just wanted to point out, I know in the past, I know the kids, we've had this with other classes as well, for example, the kids that are in musical, in the musical arts that want to go on and pursue that in college. I know all three of my girls did not get that weighted, and that, you know, that hindered them as well. But they can't make all of them weighted, so there is a process to go through. But like I said, I know the kids that have been in the band and been in the chorus, and some of them, I mean, go on to pursue that, that's where their scholarships come from as well. So, I mean, I don't think this is anything new as far as half the process of, sometimes it takes a year or two years, and it's frustrating, because I was frustrated too, but I know Dr. Jackson won't, you know, look into it.
And I can totally understand where you're coming from in that sense as well. But with this particular course, Susan Smith assures me that she thinks it has met every single requirement that is needed for it to be a weighted GPA course. And basically, the children that are currently sophomores are going to be negatively affected because of a date that a new principal didn't know about. That's why I'm asking for this to be looked into. It wasn't that she submitted the documents, they came back and said, it doesn't make it. That it was never, that was never.
Looked at, so we don't, we don't know. So it sounds like it's going to be looked into.
I'm going to look into it and get back to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You had commented earlier that you were a little nervous about the microphone. You're an excellent speaker.
We did.
You really are. Thank you. Our next speaker is Elaine Galk, and she would like to speak about board decorum.
I wrote it out, and I talk too fast, and so I'm doing it this way. I'd like to discuss how the board cuts across the public. This is for all five of you. You've got to stop trying to upstage each other. That may not be exactly what I mean. I wish that all of you would stop talking about things that happened in the past, things you did or did not get to do. The Northwest Local School District Board of Education is elected to do what's best for the kids in the district. I've been four years on that board, and it was a wonderful experience. What I enjoyed most is when the children found a presentation, won an award, and got to sit up there and watch the expressions on their faces when they discussed what they did. The age of the child made no difference when they spoke. You could see the pride in their faces, be they in elementary, middle, or high school. I still miss that, and that's why I continue to come to meetings. What is sad is that coming to meetings, to our meetings is not enjoyable anymore. Everyone in the audience is waiting for the next interruption from the board members. Example is the last meeting. You guys start talking about who gave donations to what candidate, why some company got the job, and what they did for the board member. I got so petty that when all of you kept going back to the past, because maybe you were slighted by that, wait for it, those who had the majority at the time. There should never be any segment of the board who is in the majority, because those of us who are or were on the school board should have had one question on their mind when they cast their vote. They should ask themselves, will this vote coming up hurt for benefit of the students? If it is good for the kids and gives them a better chance to succeed, then you vote for what is good for them, whether you agree or not. No decisions be made because you have majority. Now you, and now you believe that you are the ones in charge, and you can do what you want. This is, this is not about you, and that goes for all of you. Your job is to give the kids in this district the best education they can get. That takes input from everyone. We also need to get over the past and go from now. If you find that you do have some major disagreements with a fellow board member, please keep it private. Spare the public, we have enough problems of our own. Another thing that's happening is people are coming to these meetings, and they get so frustrated when you start arguing, they start making comments that doesn't help anything. The best thing that I can suggest to them is to take notes and speak at the end of the meeting, let the board member know how you feel in respectful way. Remember, it will be up to you at the ballot box to keep or replace those that you disagree with when they're up for election again. That is what is so great about America, or used to be. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's all the, that is all the yellow cards I have this evening. Our next item is certificated licensed personnel. Dr. Jackson?
Yes, you have three certified resignations, four extra-duty certified resignations, and two procedural extra-duty certified resignations. The Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the certificated licensed personnel retirements and resignations as listed.
Motion's been moved and seconded.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Bertram, please call for the vote. The motion passes five to zero. Our next item is classified personnel. Dr. Jackson?
Yes, you have two classified resignations and three procedural classified resignations. The Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the classified retirements and resignations as listed.
Motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Bertram, please call for the vote. The motion carries five to zero. Our next item is a banking services agreement with PNC Bank.
Yes, I'll call on our Treasurer, Mr. Bertram, to describe the new banking services, RFP.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. On March 3rd, we put out a banking service RFP. We sent it out to eight banking institutions within our school district. We had five, or five banks that replied, and we went through a process through the RFP where we had a committee of six score each banking RFP on eight criteria: ability to provide required banking services, credit quality of the financial institution, interest and earning credit capabilities, overall cost of banking, physical proximity to banking offices and our school buildings, ability to recommend provide additional services, quality and quantity of online banking services, and background and public fund experience of cash management officers. And going through the process, PNC Bank won through the scoring matrix that we used, and it just so happened that PNC Bank also was offering the services at the lowest cost. PNC Bank came in at about $18,700 annually for the services that are required of our district, and the highest bank came in at $36,600, to give you a range. Currently, we use the October banking costs, which ideally is our most expensive month, and currently we're paying, well, based on October, it's actually less than that, about $27,800 a year, so we expect our banking services to drop by about $9100 a year, with going just with PNC Bank to provide those services for us. And for this reason, I am asking for a five-year banking service agreement with PNC Bank.
The motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? One of the questions I had for you earlier, Mr. Bertram, was since this RFP was put out, we've changed our purchasing policy to allow three-year contracts, and your answer was this was put out before that, so.
It was put out before that, also under the new agreement, that three-year contract is for all agreements, $25,000 or more. And I did anticipate these coming in below the $25,000, which it does do, so I think it still falls within the new guidelines as well. But yeah, it was put out a week before we changed the policy.
Anything after March 10th is going to be, which, any other RFPs we've had out since then would be for three years?
Yes.
If the cost is over $25,000, that's what the board policy requires.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear why we were considering a five-year contract.
Continue to save us money, Randy. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I, I just, I'm grateful that you found the, you know, the low bidder turned out to be the best bidder, and I'm still shocked at the cost differential between the low bid and the high bid. That was eye-opening.
It's, banking services are getting very expensive, and, you know, I think in this case, had we bid it for three years, because of a lot of the initial costs, we would have seen probably that $25,000 range or higher, you know, with PNC, with the low bidders, because a lot of the initial cost to set up the accounts and so forth. But I, yeah, I think this was an ideal time to lock in the service for an extended period of time.
Randy, the PNC Bank is regarded as one of the strongest banks in the country, but I'm curious, just as a question here, why would three of the eight not even respond for a big?
Well, I think two of them didn't respond because of the size of the district, the volume, when you're talking $50 million worth of business or more. And having 13 locations, it kind of scared them off, thinking, hey, we're going to get 13 drops a day at one location. It was more than they could handle.
There's been a motion and a second with no further discussion. Mr. Bertram, please call for the vote. The motion carries five to zero. Our next item is our five-year forecast.
Yes, I'm going to call on Mr. Bertram again. This is a little bit more informal than our October forecast, but he wanted to update the board on the May update with the five-year forecast.
Thank you. Five-year forecast for May, we, of course, it is an updated forecast from last October. We try to capture fiscal year-end within this forecast. Typically, I try to be as accurate as possible with what I think expenditures are going to be. I was probably a little more lenient this year, because we still have a lot of items out there that still have to come in for their final checks and so forth. We have a lot of open purchase orders still out there. But what I did want to point out, what you see on the screen for the audience, I know it's hard to see from here, this is available out on our website under electronic school board, if you want to pull it up at home. But the first item up there, the red line indicates what I forecasted in October, the blue lines indicate what I forecasted this May. And just to give you an example, line one is the general property tax. It looks like property taxes are going to come in this year about 1.6% higher than I anticipated in October, and that's about $600,000, and a lot of that has to do to better collections than normal. Although we have always collected pretty steady, even through these hard times, it looks like we're doing a little bit better. Public utilities is going to come in about 4.9% higher, moving down to the second-largest red line out there. That's our unrestricted granted grant in aids, and the one below it is restricted granted aids. This is the money we receive from the state annually. What I forecasted in October did not have as much restricted aid. Now that they've come out with the new formula, we've got about $1.7 million that we're receiving in poverty aid, which, a year ago, that was unrestricted, now it's restricted. If you put those two items together, we're going to come in about 2.25% higher than I forecasted in October. And again, that's about $600,000. And then when you look at revenue as a whole, actually, all other operating revenue, it looks like it's going to come in about $1 million less than normal, about 18% low. And I really haven't investigated that yet with the year not closing yet, but I'll be looking into that to see where that revenue's falling short. But all in all, revenue is up slightly by about a quarter percent. I'll just scroll down. Next item I want to talk about, no, yeah, right there. Thank you. The next item then is our expenditures for the year. Top line is personnel services or salaries. We're forecasting about $43.3 million in October. It's going to come in just under $43,000, $43 million, about 1% under forecast. Insurance and fringe benefits is the next line item, and it's actually going to come in almost 8% below the October forecast, and a lot of that has to do with our insurance committee coming together and committee coming together, and I had forecasted a 10% increase on health insurance, but they came together, put a lot of decrements in place, and we saw about a 3% increase in insurance instead of 10%. So that saved us nearly 8% on that forecasted line item. Purchase services coming in just a little bit higher than normal. And supplies and materials, I actually show that coming in about four hundred thousand dollars higher than forecasted, but it may come in a little bit lower. We have a lot of encumbrances out there, and one of the reasons for the increase is we're, the textbooks you just recently adopted, we're actually purchasing those this fiscal year instead of waiting till July to ensure that they're gonna be on time for the start of the new school year. Other objects, looks like we're down about 16.5%. As a whole, expenditures are actually down 1.61% from what I forecasted in October, and that's a savings of about 1.25 million dollars. So as usual, each year, it seems like we never spend what we originally forecast that we're going to spend. We have a real nervous twitch in this district to spend the money that's allocated to us because of all the, all the budget crunching we've been doing since 2006, so that seems pretty normal. Cash balance, cash balance is gonna come in a little bit higher than anticipated, about 5% higher because of the lack of expenditures. For fiscal year 15, looks like cash balance is gonna come in just over a million dollars higher than what I forecasted. And then in fiscal year 16, the cash balance starts to drop a little bit because of the agreement that we had with staff on a two-and-a-half percent salary increase when I only forecasted a 2% in the prior budget. But it's just down about eight hundred thousand dollars from what we forecasted in October. Are there any questions?
On the public utility component, where you show the change from October till now, I, it was last year at some point when the Duke Energy Property Tax Valuation was settled. Is that what the figure you're showing now, now that that's all been settled, is that gonna give us a more predictable, steady figure going into the future?
Yes, and it's got a little additional in there because of the makeup on that public utility.
So how did that work out for Duke? Did they get what they wanted or some of what they wanted?
They didn't get the 40% cut they wanted, they got about a 10% cut.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, I just have one question on the, all other operating revenues, could you please give us some examples of what those revenues are, what those sources are?
All other operating revenue is, any, any revenue we receive from, why am I freezing, Chris? No, it's revenue from Greentownship, there's an example. We receive about four million dollars a year in Greentownship in that area.
From the TIF?
Yes.
That doesn't go in the property tax, it goes, it's a pilot from the TIF, so it's okay.
Yes, yes, it's other revenue. And then lots of times, if we have insurance claims, things like that, they'll fall into that category as well. Yeah. Our, yeah, our Butler Tech, our building leases, our, our building rentals, all that falls in here as well. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bertram.
The treasurer and superintendent recommend the Board of Education approve the five-year forecasts as presented.
So moved. Second.
The motion's been moved and seconded. Was there any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, Mr. Bertram, please call for a vote. The motion carries five to zero. Our next item is certificated licensed personnel. Dr. Jackson?
Yes, we have eleven certified approvals, we have two changes in status, and we have several extra duty contracts. Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the certificated licensed personnel items as listed.
So moved.
Second.
The motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Bertram, please call for a vote. The motion carries five to zero. Our next item is a job description for parent mentor. Dr. Jackson?
Yes, we have a parent mentor that is funded through both a state grant, and also this person helps us comply with the Title I requirements for parent involvement. So in order to stay up to date with these two grants, every once in a while, we have to update this job description. So the job description is presented to the board for the parent mentor to update and revise as needed. The superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the job description as listed.
So moved. Second.
The motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Bertram, please call for a vote. The motion carries five to zero. The next item is classified personnel items. Dr. Jackson?
And we have three classified substitutes for approval. The superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the classified personnel items as listed.
So moved.
Second.
The motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? And as I say at a lot of meetings, this has all been online since Friday morning, so anyone that wanted to see our agenda, we typically have them posted by Friday morning. Mr. Bertram, please call for a vote. The motion carries five to zero. Our next item is an out-of-state athletic field trip request.
Yes, this is for Corrin High School to, for an out-of-state field trip to Marion Harding for an annual wrestling tournament. The attachment says track, but if you open it up, it actually is, it's just, it's just titled incorrectly, but it's the actual request for the wrestling team. The superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the Corrin High School field trip request as listed.
So moved.
Second.
The motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Andrew, where is Marion Harding?
You know, I believe it's up near in the Cleveland area.
It's in the, it's just north of Columbus, kind of between Columbus and Findlay.
Okay, 'cause I, I thought Warren Harding.
There's a Warren Harding too. I mean, the one in Marion is named for the president, Harding, who was there, and there's also Harding who I assume is the president in the city of Warren as well. I think they, yeah, so, there are, there are actually several Harding highs across the state of Ohio for some reason.
So is there an issue with listing this as an out-of-state field trip?
Well, it really should've been overnight is what it should've been.
Well, you got extended.
But it's, yeah.
It's out-of-state or extended.
Yeah, it should've been, I'm sorry, it should've been overnight and not out-of-state, but it still needs board approval either way, so.
Should we motion for it?
I live in Indiana, that's out-of-state for me.
For the record, with the understanding this is an in-state trip and it's an extended overnight trip.
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Bertram, please call for a vote. The motion carries five to zero. Our next item is the student activity handbook. Dr. Jackson?
We're gonna have several handbooks that we'll move through very quickly. We, we updated our board policies back in 2010, and during that process, in several of the board policy, it talks about a handbook being presented each year to the board. Whether there's changes or not, it has to be presented and approved by the board. So as we move through these, these are presented as items for information. This time at our next meeting, we'll have them for approval. Most of them have very minor changes, if any, and some of them just simply have corresponding dates that need to be changed, et cetera. So the first two are the student activity books, handbook, and this is done by the treasurer, so there's a memo along with the handbook for your information, and the memo describes the changes, which I believe there's no changes to this one. And again, this is just not for information, so there'll be no action at this meeting. If anyone has questions about the handbooks, they can email them to me, and I can get them to the correct person if you're not sure who to ask about them, and they'll be presented at the next meeting for approval.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson.
Yes.
Our next item is the master facility plan board work session.
Our new architect, Roth Lesko, would like to have a work session as one of the first items to move through the master facility plan. We currently have board meetings planned for July 14th, 21st, and 28th. We typically do three in July because we do a lot of hiring in the month of July, and we need to do that. So we need to continue to have those three meetings. I was gonna suggest that on Monday, July 14th, that we would do some quick personnel items at the beginning of the meeting and use the rest of that meeting for the work session with the architects, and then we'll continue the 21st and 28th as normal meetings with normal agenda items. I wasn't sure if anybody had a problem with that.
I would, I, I actually need to discuss the meeting on the 14th, I won't be able to make it, but there would be, so we can discuss that too. So obviously, I'd favor the, the meeting on the week of the 7th.
Okay.
For, for this purpose.
We're both unavailable that week of the 7th. The only night that week will be the 10th. It's going up to.
Could we do it on the following Monday?
On the 21st?
Yes. Would you be here?
Okay.
And then, and then going back to the 7th, it sounds like we would only have three, so I wouldn't wanna have a meeting then.
The 14th. We don't have a meeting on the 7th, we have one on the 14th, yeah.
But Michael can't make it on the 14th?
Michael cannot be on the 14th.
I'd say for the purposes of this issue, my idea as one person would be to go ahead and have the master facility planning on July 21st, Monday.
That's fine, we can do that.
And then if we need to, I'd like to have meetings when we're all here, so.
If at all possible, I'd still like to have the one on the 14th, just to do some hiring, 'cause after July 10th is, is with the contract deadline where they, you know...
We need to have meetings quickly to hire people quickly so they don't accept offers from somewhere else.
Typically, Dan, I, I know we always try to all be here, but I know in July, when it's only a couple procedural things, we've even done it where there's just been three...
That's fine.
If it's ju, if it's only that.
We can even do it in the morning in ten minutes and just to get the hiring piece of it done, yeah. So we'll leave that on the agenda on the 14th, and we can discuss that through email and try to get that set up as needed. But the 21st then will be a work session, we'll have a few personnel items as needed, and then we'll have the work session with the architect on the 21st.
Which is a Monday.
Which is a Monday. And then the 28th will stay on there as well, will be a normal meeting.
The 21st, is it 7? Are we moving it up since we're doing?
We can move it up if that works for everyone.
Six-thirty or six?
Doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter neither.
Six o'clock work?
Sure.
Okay. Six-fifteen. I, I don't get out of work till a little after five, and sometimes it's a challenge to get here, so. Do we do Wendy six-thirty to get?
Sure.
Six-thirty on?
Okay.
Fine. Six-thirty on?
The 21st.
Monday, July 21st, and we'll still have our meeting on the 14th and the 21st and the 28th.
Yes.
Okay. Our next item is general business, the collective bargaining agreement. Dr. Jackson?
Yes, I was directed the last meeting to get some clarification regarding SERB and the various filing requirements. So there's two different things that came up the last meeting. One was regarding the notice to negotiate, and you can, in your packet there, in your attachments, you have an email from our UNISERB director at Ohio Education Association, as well as a memo from our attorneys, Ms. Robertson Fisher. And historically, it's been the Teachers Association that has submitted that, and they did say that it was overlooked this past year regarding that. The other issue that came up was the collective bargaining agreement. That actually cannot be submitted until it's executed, it's not executed until it goes into effect. So ours goes into effect on June 30th, 2014, we have 30 days to submit it, and you have an email there clarifying that we are compliant currently with our collective bargaining agreement, and we would have to submit it sometime between June 30th and July 30th of 2014. So that was just for clarification that came up at the last meeting. Any questions on it?
What, so, just to reiterate, our, our attorneys did not do, miss any deadlines or anything?
That's correct.
The notice to, of intent to notify, which should've been filed in 2013, was not filed.
Okay.
The contract was filed on May 20th with, with SERB, so it was filed May 20th.
Let me clarify two things. One is that the intent to negotiate is the responsibility of OEA, so it wasn't the attorney that forgot to file that, so, okay.
It was the teachers' union that should've filed that, not the attorneys.
And they have a, correct, and they have a copy of our collective bargaining agreement because I think OEA went ahead and sent that up to them. That's not the filing of the collective bargaining agreement. The filing of the collective bargaining agreement comes with some various documentation that goes with it. They, they will only put online the current collective bargaining agreements, and, and our current one is not the new one, obviously, until it goes into effect.
The new one is time stamped May 20th of 2014.
Okay, I think we're saying the same thing and not agreeing.
But just to reiterate, because it, it, an accusation was made last meeting that our, our attorneys did something wrong, and what I'm hearing, this wasn't the attorneys, this was the teachers' union, correct?
The question was, the question was, why wasn't it filed? There was no accusation of anything.
And also...
And it wasn't filed.
And also, if it hadn't been brought up, I dare say it probably would not have been filed on May 20th.
But it is what it is.
It is what it is.
The next item is the report card improvement team report.
All right, I have a presentation to make to the board regarding our report card. I put together a report card improvement team back in January, and I wanna kinda go through the process. We went through as a group and what our charge was, and some of the team members as well. I think, I see several of the team members here today, so I'll try to introduce them as we get to that. I think I have to do something here. So first, the charge of the committee was to review our current report card, investigate other similar school districts with better results, and then make recommendations regarding programming at Northwest Local School District. The team members, I was on the team along with Mr. Bertram, Tracy Ray, Assistant Superintendent, Jenny Plus, Director of Curriculum, Todd Bowling, Director of Business Services, Fran Morrison, Assistant Director of Curriculum, Darryl Gator, Assistant Director of Curriculum, Paletta Crowley, Assistant Director of Student Services, Susan Smith, Principal at Northwest High School, Dustin Garing, Principal of Wyde Middle School, Linda Dawes, Principal at Welch Elementary, Lori Reilly, Principal at Weigle Elementary, Gail Davis, Assistant Principal at Corrin High School, and we have Emily Ritchie, who is a teacher at Corrin High School, Gabe Warner, a teacher at Pleasant Run Middle School, and Michelle Fricki, who is a teacher at Monford Heights, Isaac Fears, who is a parent and an assistant at Northwest Passage, Carrie Robers, a parent, and Robert Martin, who is a community member, and I would like to thank several of them that came out tonight in support of this for their work on this and for coming out this evening as well. We met on January 29th, and we met again on February 25th, and then we met as a team. Our final meeting was on May 7th with recommendations. Between the February 25th and May 7th, we had some sub-teams that met, each team met a different amount of times, but it was four to five times on, on each team, and I'll explain kinda what each team did here in just a second. So the initial task was to review our current report card. We also took some time to become familiar with the ODE report card website, and also the EVOS Value Added Data website, and that's the company that analyzes our value added, which is one of the major components of our report card, to come up with areas of focus, and then eventually narrow that area down to three different areas of focus. Originally, these are the original areas of focus that we came up with. We decided we were going to focus on the economically disadvantaged gap closing, our graduation rate, our sixth and seventh grade math progress, which is the same as value added, our seventh grade reading progress, which is value added, our seventh grade math achievement, which is the passage rate, our students with disability gap closing, and our third grade math achievement. Those were our original areas where we felt like we needed to make improvements in. After some discussion, we decided to narrow the focus down to three, that was a more manageable list, and then send groups out to investigate this. So the three areas we decided to look at were the economically disadvantaged gap closing, our graduation rate, and our seventh grade math and reading progress or value added. These three teams were divided and led by various administrators, central office administrators. The first sub-team was the economically disadvantaged gap closing team, and they were led by Jenny Plus, Director of Curriculum. The graduation rate team was led by Fran Morrison, Assistant Director of Curriculum. The seventh grade math and reading progress or value added was led by Darryl Gator, Assistant Director of Curriculum. And what they needed to do then is find other districts with similar demographics and compare programming with us and make recommendations. So I wanna kinda go through each group and what they came up with. I will tell you first that the economically disadvantaged group, they are still meeting, so I don't have any recommendations to share with you with that team yet, but I, I do for the graduation rate and the seventh grade. so I don't have any recommendations to share with you with that team yet, but I do for the graduation rate and the 7th grade math reading progress. First, with the graduation rate, these are the different schools that they went to look at. They either visited the schools, or went online to compare their data, or made phone calls. And it was, the timing wasn't perfect, it was between OAA and OGT testing, and so it was difficult to get some return calls. But they did look at those various schools. And they came with the following recommendations. One was to mentor new students to the high school, and we do have a mentoring program, but it's something that we can expand upon. Investigate mental health services, a vertical transition from 8th grade to 9th grade. Target sophomores who are not on track in a college prep track or in a career program. Continue to develop the middle school career program. Explore diversionary court for turency, and that would be a court that we would work with the township on, where they could meet with, instead of going down to Hamilton County, actually take care of it here and have more an effect on it. And then explore online school as an alternative to expulsion. And they suggest we replicate what's called educational opportunities for success at Westerville, and maybe add it to our currently Northwest Passage programming. At this time, we're kind of transitioning, Fran Morrison left, went to Lakota. We're waiting for our new Assistant Director of Curriculum that will be dealing with secondary to get on board. So we're going to be working on this this summer to see how much of this we can implement this upcoming school year. The next one is the 7th grade reading progress, math and reading progress. And it really became more of a middle school overall focus. But these are the various schools that the 7th grade math and reading progress team went to look at. They either visited, or made phone calls, or went online. They came back and they found that, first, these are the commonalities they found with these, this group. One is that they had a team structure based, instead of content team that we switched to a few years ago, they went back to the team of 7th grade and 8th grade would have the same language arts, math, social studies, and science teacher, and so we could work with some social skills with them. They had heterogeneous grouping, they had 50 to 60-minute core classes. They had their intervention within the core class, instead of a separate pull-out program to provide intervention for students, they did it within the core class. No study hall, which we currently have, and they had a co-teacher inclusion model. So the middle school team came back with these recommendations for this upcoming school year, and then some additional for next year. And we've actually started to make these changes at the middle schools. One is we're going to restructure the middle school day from a seven-bell day to a six-bell day. Instead of having a 44 to 46-minute bell, our core classes of math, language arts, social studies, and science will be 60 minutes long. We currently have a shorter bell, and then students are pulled out either one or two quarters into like an elective intervention or enrichment bell, where they try to align that, and we're going to instead do that in the core class. And then they'll also have two elective bells a day, but they will be shortened to 40 minutes. The middle school team teachers will meet in grade levels and content using the teacher-based team process. We've had several reports this year regarding the teacher-based team process. Several of our principals have come, made the reports on that. That's when they look at the data, they assess the students, they look at the data, decide how they're going to change the instruction to respond to it, and then reconvene in one to two weeks to look at it again. So they'll be meeting on a common planned time each week on both as a content level, like all the math, all the language arts, but also as a team with all the core content together. So they'll have two different agendas, and they'll meet throughout the week. For 2015 and 16, we will eliminate study halls at the middle schools. We will, we are going to cut it down for next year, but we don't have enough electives to replace it, to replace the study hall yet. And then we will add two additional electives at the middle schools to replace the study hall. One will be a STEM elective, which is science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, that we have our science curriculum specialists working on, but it's going to take some time to develop. The other one will be to take the computer applications class that we currently teach freshmen and a few sophomores, and bring it down to the 8th grade level. This is actually a Butler Tech class, and so it will take some coordination with them. It'll be for high school credit, they have expressed interest in wanting to do this. We'll also prepare these students that are going to the high school, and they start their first year with blended. The health, all our freshmen take health blended, they'll give them the computer skills they need to make sure they can do that. So that will have to be coordinated with Butler Tech. And again, these are things we're going to implement for next year in the 14, 15 school year. I'm real excited about what I believe will be better instruction and better learning and better use of data at our middle schools. I think we'll see great results as a result of it as well. One piece that's also being kind of dovetailed with this, which isn't part of this team's recommendations, but something that is happening, is our Title I funding has been increased. And you'll remember that each of our elementaries has an instructional coach funded through Title I to help us teachers. We're going to be able to replicate that at our middle schools next year as well. So those instructional coaches, the middle schools, we're adding without any additional local funds or state funds. It'll be through federal funds, and they'll be able to help monitor the TBT process at the middle school grade levels. So that was the process we went through. I want to thank all the various members of the team that are out there that spent quite a bit of time after-school meeting on several meetings, and did some really good work, and ultimately turned in what we really wanted, which was comparing demographically similar districts that were doing better, and looking at what they're doing and see what we can replicate here. So I'll turn it over to the board if any of you have any questions regarding this.
I guess my first question, and I thank everyone who worked so hard on this, and it's definitely, process of continuous improvement is definitely something to work on here. It's great to go out and, it takes a lot of courage to actually ask for help and see how it ideas sometimes, and so I thank you for doing that. I do have a question, though, about the vertical transition from 8th grade to 9th grade, and what exactly does that mean?
I think what, it's basically just a transition program, two things, one for the student, to make sure they're prepared to be a freshman, are there some things socially that we're missing that we need to prepare them for in 8th grade, so that they can be successful as a freshman? But also in terms of curriculum, to make sure that the 8th grade curriculum is vertically articulated so that they're prepared with, and they're getting the content they need for their freshman year. So it's kind of twofold on that.
Okay, yeah, those are all very important things, it's just kind of lost in translation there.
I just have a question, I know there'd been some mention that, you know, the results we have today are based on the things we've done in the past. Well, I don't think any of us in this room wanted to have all the kids that we did have in study hall, but at the time, it was due to lack of funding and so on and so forth. So I do think this is very good news to see that the 2015, 16 school year, we can get back to eliminating those study halls so that we can use that time with the kids, you know, to focus on the curriculum. So I am glad to see that. And just realize that some decisions that were made in the past weren't decisions anybody really, it wasn't their first choice to make, but unfortunately, it came down to dollars. And that was one I know that really bothered me when we had to keep putting more kids in the study hall. But unfortunately, the reality is, you can put somebody in study hall, you know, to monitor them, maybe not necessarily a teacher with many years' experience for the classroom or so on and so forth. So this is wonderful that we can get back to getting them out of study hall.
Yeah, and the way we will do it, there's, it will, it may cost possibly a couple additional teachers when we do that next year. However, if we add the computer applications, that's actually a Butler Tech teacher, which would not be cost for us. It would be through Butler Tech. So we'll do it for very minimal cost if we need to do that in 15, 16.
Is any of this going to need, to implement, is any of this going to need approval from the collective bargaining unit?
We are working with them on MOU. There's an issue with plan time that possibly, they have maybe a shorter amount of plan time, just a slight amount less. So we're working on it currently. The teachers were involved in this, we had a teacher representative at each level as well. And I know that all three middle schools are excited about, you know, how we're moving forward with this, but we will have to sort that out. I don't see it as a problem.
Right, and possibly the increase in early release days will kind of help some of that too.
Yes, that's correct.
Andrew, the 240-minute electives, are those going to be at the end of the day?
Not necessarily, each grade level's different. So for 6th grade, it may be first and second bell, for 7th grade, third and fourth, for 8th grade, fifth and sixth. And that's not necessarily what it will be, but it'll be different for each grade level. You have questions?
Thank you for the report.
Yes.
The next item on the agenda is curriculum and instruction information.
Yes, here we have a list of curriculum and instruction handbooks. We have the PSEO handbook, the field trip handbook, and the credit flexibility handbook. You also have a memo in there from Mrs. Jenny Plus describing the minor changes, and really, for the credit flex, there are no changes for both the post-secondary enrollment options or the PSEO and the field trip. It's just date changes and then changes personnel in terms of approvals. So that'll be brought back to the board at the next board meeting for approval.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. Our next item is attendance and enrollment handbooks, Dr. Jackson.
And we have two additional handbooks here, the attendance handbook and the enrollment handbook, both presented by Mrs. Crowley. You'll see that the enrollment handbook just has some updated forms, but nothing, just minor date changes, et cetera, for the 14, 15 school year. And then in the attendance handbook, there's two additional withdrawal codes for EMUS that we had to put in our attendance handbook, and that is for non-attendance, for the 105-hour rule. And then there's one that is regarding documentation and residency. So you can look through those and the memo for information on that, but all the changes, again, are very minor on those.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson, and other student handbooks, Dr. Jackson.
And next are the minor revisions for the student handbooks, and this is each school. You have a memo in there that describes basically the various changes, and we have to update the dates, and that's most of it. And then there's some additional information regarding suspension. The old information had that they went to, they appealed it to the board, it's actually, the board has hired an appeal hearing officer to heal that on their behalf. Has some information about 3rd grade guarantee, and there's some new requirements regarding immunization that's been updated as well. The actual handbooks are not presented in here, there's 13 of them. If you want copies of those, you're welcome to them, and we'll get them to you. But it'll be about 1,000 pages of reading, if you want to do that, we'll send them to you. Just let me know if you want those, and we'll get them to you.
And for anybody in the audience, this is all available, you can read it online on the agenda for this evening, which will be, is publicly available. Our next item is communications. If there's anyone in the audience who has a question about anything that was discussed this evening, if you'd please come to the microphone, Mr. McVeigh.
Well, it was pleasing to me to see that report, and the only thing I would say is that I continue to think that academic output is the most important thing we deal with. And when this group comes back and makes a report like this around improvements, you know, I'd like to see a board that's more excited about the fact that they've come back with some good ideas and are going to implement it. Because this, as Michael pointed out, you know, to go out and ask for help when you, it takes nerve. You have to talk to people, open yourself up, and I think they need real boost from the leadership team to continue this kind of work. It's important, this is what's going to continue to move this school system forward. This is not the last trip they're going to make, they have to make other trips. You see how other people are doing things, they need to be buoyed up by this leadership team, and this is the right thing for people to be doing. Get them excited about it, say, you know, I like this, because this is what's going to change the system. This is what's going to change, because we are changing the system, how we educate. When we change the system, the results will improve. I just had a question, is this piggyback on the Marzano method, is it going to work with it and in tune with it, or is it running against it?
It will work with it, there is an entire domain regarding collaboration, and that, the model is working with their team, their colleagues and their content and their grade level. Every day, they'll have either their content or their grade level to meet with, and that's part of, it's really one-fourth of the Marzano evaluation system we're using, which is collaboration.
How much face-to-face time did you actually get with other schools and students? I mean, I understand you looked at curriculum, you look at paper, how much time with students and teachers?
The middle school team got the most, they actually were able to get to buildings and speak with administrators. I don't know if they spoke with students or not, but they did speak with administrators. Like I said, the timing wasn't real good for the, particularly for the elementary group, looking at the economically disadvantaged, because they were right in the middle of testing, and people just weren't returning our calls. So they're still investigating it. And the same with the graduation team, they were able to get to some people as well and speak to administrators at various school districts. They were not able to see them face-to-face, though.
So if we're on our best behavior, maybe they'll invite us back, we can do it, we can learn from this. And the other thing I was going to say about this was, and I knew, Andrew, you and I have talked about this, it's leadership behavior. Did you talk about leadership behavior? What are the assistant principals doing? What are the principals doing in these systems during the day when these kids are in school? Did you get a chance to talk about that? Because leadership on-site, as well as just the paperwork's important.
We did not, that was not one of the charges of the group to look at leadership. Part of the reason why, Rich, is we have a very, really a prescribed method of evaluating our leaders and really what the behaviors are. Down, not only of how often we have to do it and what the deadlines are, but what we should be looking for in our leaders, how to rate them specifically. Now, we chose the Marzano instead of the OPAS model, but they're both very similar. So we felt like, and this is the first year of implementing it, so we felt like we needed good data to look at our leadership model before we start making changes to it. So that was not something we considered in it.
That I can understand, I'm just saying, I'm really strong on the fact that leadership shapes the culture. And the fact that we are talking with the leaders, that we're dealing with and asking what they're doing, what's working, what's not working, as well as the paperwork, is important, because that's what's going to change the culture. The leadership is going to change the culture.
I agree.
And I'm encouraged by the fact, wish the board would give you a big round of applause, or you could be joyous and noisy around this kind of stuff, you know, I would encourage you to do that.
Thank you. Was there, please approach the podium, please, sir.
My name is Robert Martin, and I was one of the members of that group. First of all, I think I was the designated senior citizen member, I have grandchildren in the system. And I was equally perplexed, I guess, when I saw the report card. And I don't want to sound like I did perhaps when I tried to explain a bad report card to my father, but I think if you drill down, and I know that's an overused term these days, but if you drill down, the report card really isn't as bad as it shows. There are some reasons for it, and I don't want to single out one reason in particular, but for example, Mr. Bowling convinced me that mobility is a big issue in the system. And we have a lot of kids that come in and out of the system for various reasons. And the kids that are in the system the longest tend to succeed. So I think you and the community should take some heart from that. And I also want to say, and this is not meant to be platitudes, the, all of the teachers, and I don't want to single out any one of them, because they were all great. And the group and the community should be very, very proud, and I'm very proud, of all the participation that took place on that. Mr. Jackson, I was a school board member myself in a previous life. My wife has made sure that I will never do that again, so I will never do that again. But I will tell you that I've dealt with administrators before, and Mr. Jackson is a pleasure to deal with, he ran every meeting very well. And each of the subgroups that I met with were very well-run. So we have a lot to be proud of in the system, we have a lot of work to do, but there's a lot to be proud of, so, thank you.
I appreciate your service on the committee.
Thank you.
Anyone else that would like to address the topic that was brought up this evening?
I, just not to continue the love fest, I'm Jack Tobler. I, real quick, to the board members, I don't know, I was a career day at White Oak, okay? And I do the teach-in at Corrin, and I do, I'm in the schools a lot, okay? And I would encourage you guys to do the same thing, because you're going to find these great kids. And we have just stellar kids, and we got some bad seeds, 23 kids get, but you know what? That's how the world works, that's why we have prisons. No disrespect, but you can't, you know, it starts at home with the parents. But I just want, I wish you guys come and see these great kids. And it's funny, because to Dr. Jackson's horn, I sat down with the teachers at White Oak afterwards and tried to, you know, what do you guys think about this guy? You know what I mean? And the reality is, I knew a lot of them, because my kids had been through these school districts. And so, you know, and all of them had rave reviews for Dr. Jackson. And I think you guys should consider yourself fortunate to have him, and you did good in hiring him, he's doing a good job. And I actually went to the trouble of driving over here and to tell him real quick, because it's, you know, there is a lot of beating up and stuff like that that goes on, and the reality is that there's also a lot of good kids. And when you see these good kids, it really warms your heart, it really makes you proud. kids, it really warms your heart, it really makes you proud to be, you know, part of it. And I'm a product of Colrain Township and Northwest District, and I, you know, I think that if you're involved, you'll see the good kids. Unfortunately, what you hear a lot of times is you read about the bad kids in the paper, the good kids don't necessarily make it in the paper, so anyhow, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else that would like to discuss something that was brought up this evening?
Good evening. I guess I missed something in the last couple of meetings, when I missed it. Wasn't here, there was some excitement? No, I'm teasing. One question, and I guess we can't have a meeting without any controversy, right? Is the current attendance policy as published with, has that been, what is, is that new or changed or different, or is that the current policy that's instituted with the district?
Are you asking about the handbook that was just presented?
Yeah, the, the notes in the, about attendance and policies for attendance.
The handbook was presented as, for information, but that's basically the same handbook that we currently have, just a few changes to it.
I only bring that up because at the awards banquet, there's often the, you know, and I think attendance is critical, obviously, and there's a lot of certificate, certificates around perfect attendance. I noticed in the rules it says that perfect attendance is man, is managed per school and not a district policy, so each school can determine what constitutes a perfect attendance? Is that a correct understanding? Because the, the, if I'm reading the handbook correctly, it also states that early dismissals meaning leaving and coming back is not an absence. Is that correct? Do I understand that correctly?
I think so. What's your question, Mark?
I'd ask the district to mandate that if you're not absent, you can have perfect attendance, because we have students, we had one student that was perfect for seven years, left a few minutes early for an orthodontic appointment that was unavoidable because of the way the doctor schedules, and missed perfect attendance. Another student left at lunchtime and came back, didn't miss any academic time, an hour of lunch, but was marked absent for the day and missed perfect attendance. But may, went to great lengths to try and schedule his appointment over lunch. So there's just some frustration there, so, just so if it could be a common policy across schools that says, if you're not absent, you're perfectly attended. Actually, the person who didn't get perfect attendance had zero absences on the report card, so it was very confusing to that student to, why didn't I get a perfect attendance certificate? I have zero absences on my report card. Well, they left fifteen minutes early one day, or they left midday and came back. So I don't know if the board or the central office can say anything as far as school policies on perfect attendance, but it seems to me if it's a zero absence on the report card, that could be perfect attendance.
I would think zero absences is the same as perfect attendance, so.
It's not at the high school, so I'll just make that controversial statement.
If there's a particular student, a particular case, I guess Dr. Jackson could look into that.
It's a certificate at the awards banquet, and it's over and done, you know, but it's just going forward, particularly like medical things and orthodontics, it seems to be the trend that kids have to leave, and I'd hate to see a very good orthodontist lose business for the fact that they don't happen to do things after hours or whatever, so. I know it's silly, but I couldn't leave without any controversy.
Seven minutes should be rewarded.
Yeah, fifteen minutes, so.
Mark, tell me where this dentist/orthodontist is that can do it all in an hour.
Well, it was just a routine appointment, but it was done during lunchtime. It had to be during the day, so the lunchtime was picked for the, I don't know if it was a retainer or something like that.
I can tell you as a parent, if you, you know, if you go to a pediatrician or a dentist that specializes in children, that those windows are very hard to get, in that, you know, two, three-hour timeframe between when school lets out and when, and you're, you know, he closes for the day, so.
Right. Now, it just seems odd to me when we have parties for kids who only miss twenty days and they get donuts and things, and a kid who only missed fifteen minutes can't get his darn certificate. Just a quick comment, thank you all.
Thank you. Was there anyone else that had any comments or questions about what's been discussed this evening? Seeing none, we'll go on to the next item, which is other board items.
I just want to reiterate my thanks to the committee that was looking into what was happening at the other school districts. I know it's, I know it's a lot of work, and certainly I've done some work in education policy and spent a lot of time looking at other districts too, and it's, it can be very rewarding, but it can also be very humbling, when you kind of walk away feeling, why didn't we think of that? Or, or is that affect? My, I'm originally from Westerville and have two nieces in the public schools there in middle school, actually, which is an area of emphasis for, they don't go to Heritage, they go to different schools, but I've seen Westerville's, you know, ups and downs over the years, and certainly they would be one that has worked very well to overcome a lot of challenges, a lot of recent challenges, especially in terms of demographics and mobility. So again, I just really thank everybody that worked on that.
Thank you. Mr. Peter?
The thing that was brought up about the mobility, you know, and I remember from my previous term, I couldn't believe it, because I know it's going way back, but it seemed like nobody ever left, and when a new kid came, that was like big stuff, and there was a new kid, and it was so rare. But, Dr. Jackson, what is the, the, can you give us any numbers specifically with the elementary school?
I can, give me one second here. Our mobility rate, I will try to find, it's on the report card, so I don't know if I can do it on the spot here, but we do have a high mobility rate, and, and we do have data that shows the longer the student is here, the better, the more successful they are. But at the same time, you know, you get who you get in public education, and that, those are the students we teach, so we have to figure out a way to get them to learn. And that's what our charge is, and so it is difficult, but it doesn't mean that's their destiny, is that they're not going to be successful, or they're not going to learn, it's, it's our role to turn that around somehow. I can certainly get that information for you, it's, it's one of the indicators, not the indicators, but it's on the data on the report card in terms of mobility rate, and we do have a high mobility rate, but we're aware of that now, we need to figure out how to address it, and we're still work, trying to sort that out.
I'd most like to see, I don't think this information is available, but just to see like every two years over the last fifty years, I bet you that chart was something like this on mobility, you know, just like in the last twenty years, you really see a big increase. And I, I just can't imagine, I mean, there's, I haven't heard of students who, in one school year, in three different schools.
Yes.
And I just can't imagine acclimating, making new friends, getting used to the system, so that certainly is a big factor, and that's something really outside of our control.
Yeah, and there's, and not only that, is, it's difficult to try to acclimate to a new environment in the middle of the year, but there's typically an underlying issue why they're moving three, four times in a year, that also makes it difficult for them to learn. So there's, I mean, it's kind of a compounding issue, but again, it's something we have to address and figure out.
I just, there was a board member some years ago who was relating a story about a kid who went home and his family had moved. He didn't even know it. Can you imagine that? You come home and your family's moved and they don't tell you, and you're, you're an eighth grader? I mean, that's just incredible to me.
I always thought that was going to happen to me.
Well, Dan, that would have been planned.
No, it's a serious, it's a serious issue, it's a serious issue, and it really is, the mobility thing is a big challenge for our district, so.
Okay, that's all. Thank you, Detschel. Mrs. Detschel?
Several things, and actually, Rich, I was saving mine till my board comments, but I do appreciate everything the committee, I, I think that's one way, I, I know in all the years I was involved in the PTA, I always thought it was so important that the PTAs meet and get together and share each school instead of which school's going to have a better carnival or this or that, get together and talk about what things work, what things don't work, and that's what they do. I mean, we meet, I know, when I was PTA president, and I know they still do it, meet once a month, and, and that's, that's the way to collaborate, to get together, so, so it, I don't think people realize how much time you've put into this, and then to come to the meeting too, we truly appreciate it. And like I had said before, I am thrilled that the fact that we will not have kids in middle school hopefully in another year sitting in study hall and have them in front of instruction is, is, is the way, you know, that's going to help. One thing I did want to mention too, we have a longtime teacher that is leaving position elsewhere, Steve Blay, I just want to thank him, I, two of my daughters had him, he's a wonderful, wonderful teacher, he's going to truly be missed at Colrain, and want to wish him the best of luck in his future. And then Jim and I had the opportunity Friday, actually, he was there Wednesday and Friday, but we had a lot of athletes from both Northwest and Colrain represented up at UD for the regional track meet, and it was a beautiful day. I know we had, Hannah Tobler was in two events, which is awesome. We had kids, I know from Colrain, we had a pole vaulter, disc, shot, and I know the pole vaulter's got another year to go, so, and Hannah as well, so good future next year for our shot at getting to state. But I also want to congratulate, it was very exciting as a Northwest alumni to see how well Northwest was represented at regionals, and Northwest has a regional champ, not only in the one-hundred meter, but also in the two-hundred meter, and he was also a member of the four-by-two that goes on to state, so he is going to be in three events at the state meet next, this weekend, and as long, as well as the other three members of the four-by-two, so want to wish, wish all of them the best of luck and look forward to seeing how well they do this weekend.
Mrs. Detschel, those state qualifiers will be brought to the board for recognition as well.
Yeah, it was exciting. And long jump, I'm sorry, I thought I missed one. It was great.
Thank you, Mrs. Detschel. My item, my item is I would like the board to consider a motion to move into executive session to discuss the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official. It would be a short meeting, I think, and we would take no action afterward. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Bertram, please call for a vote.
Mr. Detschel? Aye. Mrs. Detschel?
Aye.
Mr. Ethan?
Aye.
Mr. Harlow?
Aye.
Aye, and we will move off to a room to discuss a short issue, and we will come back only to adjourn the meeting. So thank you all for coming, you're welcome to stick around till we come back if you wish.